It is Bill thirty-one.
Yes.
We'll call the meeting to order if everybody would please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No adjustments to the agenda?
There are no adjustments this evening.
Alright, item D is approval of minutes from January twelfth, two thousand sixteen.
I move that we approve the minutes of January twelfth, two thousand sixteen as presented.
Now, second down. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Communications and correspondence.
Yes, you should have two letters of retirement in your packet. I will address those in my report.
And public participation. Is anybody in the audience took anything before the board? Alright. Item G, administrative and student board member reports. You're up first.
Good evening. For the, my student representative report for the month of February and the end of January. Our first event was the coaches versus cancer, which was a success with the T-shirts we sold. We raised a little over eight hundred dollars. And we're planning to sell a few more before we send a check to the American Cancer Society. All of the proceeds are going to the American Cancer Society. And our next item was Mr. Clifford brought the dress code to the council and asked us to review it. And we discussed it, added our thoughts and student input. And he also asked for our input on the incomplete system that's currently in place. The two weeks after the grading period has ended, students have the chance to make up some incomplete assignments on their report card. And so we put a little input into that. And now we're looking forward to our next fundraisers coming up for future events. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wyatt.
So the last two weeks, myself and guidance counselors and teachers, students, we completed our eighth grade visits. So there were, it took us about four days, over a week and a half. And we saw a hundred and forty-nine eighth graders. And we're still waiting here from Blue Hill. They let us in two years ago. And so I think we'll be able to get in there after break, after February vacation. And then March fifteenth, and obviously you're invited to, March fifteenth is our eighth grade step up night, which we're excited about. We put a committee together. We've met twice. We're revamping pretty much that entire night. And so I think everybody's understanding how important that night is because we're competing with, you know, GSA, MDI, John Baps, Brewer, Bucksport High School for students. And we need to get as many students as we can. And I think the whole faculty and staff are on board with that. And we have ten members on the committee, which has been terrific. And I think we have a lot of good ideas for that night. So I'm looking forward to that night. And this is also the end of our close to the end of winter season. So I guess I'll brag about our teams a little bit. Tonight, our girls are playing their ranked fifth in Northern Maine. And they host a prelim going on right now against Mattinock Creek Academy. If they win, they would play Saturday morning in the second game. Our boys are ranked second in Northern Maine. They play Saturday morning at nine oh five. And they had, both had terrific seasons. Our boys swim team won PVCs last night. And rather easily. And so it's been, and with PVCs, keep in mind that it's all of the schools. So it's not just Class B. So it's Bangor and Brewer and everybody. So they had a terrific night. Swimming, our girls finished fourth in PVCs a few nights ago. And so that's exciting for them. That's the highest that they've scored in a while. And Ellie Clark, who's a freshman, she was involved in four VHS records, two individual and two in a relay with some other girls. So that's exciting. Cheering finished their season last Saturday, and they were the state runner-up. They placed third in Eastern Maines, or Northern Maines, and PVC, and Big East behind Old Town and Herman. And then on Saturday, they beat Herman to be, to be the state runner-up. And Old Town won the state championship also. Wrestling finished second in PVCs last weekend, and they have their tournaments coming up this Saturday. And talking to Mr. Burns today, they've fought some sicknesses and some illnesses and some injured, injured athletes, but they keep motoring along. And indoor track has their championships coming up on Saturday. Any questions? I'll have anything.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Jim.
Good evening. At Ellsworth Elementary Middle School, for the middle school grades, I put in the report how we did last year on the state MEA assessments. And while we would always like to have more students be proficient, we were overall from grades three to eight at fifty-one percent proficient in ELA and fifty-three percent proficient in math. Quite honestly, we were higher the year before. This year was a different test, more aligned to the Common Core standards, which was certainly a tougher test. That's not an excuse because when you look at how we did compared to the state, we really kicked some butt. I don't think I've ever said that at a meeting before. But we did pretty well. And, you know, pretty much, you know, from, from between like seven and nineteen points above the state in each of those grades in the area of math. And in ELA, not, not quite as much of a gap between us and the rest of the state. But we certainly were, you know, ahead of the curve on that. So we can attribute that to the great work of our teachers and our kids, the preparation that we've had using the iReady assessment, which is an online assessment as well. And the kids take that three times a year. So when we went to the online assessment for the first time last year, our kids weren't wondering, how do I work this thing? You know, they were, they had some preparation. And in science, we only tested in two grades in science, both at fifth and at seventh grade. Fifth grade was a little bit below the state. And eighth grade was six percentage points above the state. So we're, we're feeling pretty good. We did do an analysis with the, the reports we get from the state with the teachers last week, and that was just kind of grade level information. We, we will be getting what they call it item analysis, and released items in the near future where we can see exactly what questions we got wrong, more so than other questions, and then work with the kids on that. We've already gotten released items for the science assessment and are already using that in classes, you know, here's the type of question you've got to be able to answer. So pretty good news. In co-curricular news, we got some really great news. We had a family in town and a business in town donate forty-five hundred dollars to purchase twelve new robotics kits. These things go for like a hundred and seventy-nine bucks a piece. And the reason for that was that we had a waiting list of students who did not get into the robotics club. We have two, two adults running that club. We take twenty-four kids, and now we, we now will be able to do about another sixteen kids with these twelve kids. So we're, we're very grateful for that. And I'm also very thankful that Mrs. Stackpole, she's going to end cheering here pretty quick. And actually on, at our winter carnival Friday, she's going to meet with that new group for the first time during winter carnival. So thank you to her as well. I mentioned last month, we have a tournament for the first time in years for our basketball league. And our undefeated varsity team will, for boys, will face off against Old Town tomorrow at Brewer High at six o'clock. And our girls will play a final in kind of, they're in the lower tier, our boys are in the top tier. But the girls nonetheless won their first game and have advanced to their finals. And they'll play at four thirty. So we're, we've got a nice date tomorrow in Brewer planned. And then cheerleading wise, you know, Mrs. Stackpole's cheerleaders have been consistent year in, year out. They, they've been in two competitions, they've won two competitions. They'll have a state competition still to go in March. We also have a JV squad. They finished second in their competition at the Doughty School. And we actually host our own competition at the end of this month on the twenty-seventh. It's more for smaller schools in the area, and our JVs compete in that. So that's a nice, nice fundraiser for us. And I mentioned the winter carnival. Love to have as many parents as possible help out with that. There's all kinds of events. We start after lunch at eleven-ten, we go to about one-thirty. Teachers will probably prevail again in the student-faculty basketball game. That's just a prediction. I hope that comes true. And Friday is also wear red day for Spirit Day, Valentine's Days this weekend, and it's American Heart Association Month as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Here's some roper.
Good evening, everybody. And that's a K through eight wear red day. So I have a lot to report on. We're really excited to welcome back Bob Stewart this year. He, this will be our third year of doing the main college circle where kids meet with him, and he talks about their aspirations when they grow up. And every child has an opportunity to write an essay. And there's a little part that the parents do, as well as the teachers. And they're due back on April first. And all kids who fill out the application, we always have, you know, give them something. And then some kids will get a hundred dollar scholarship. And we just had somebody, actually Bronwood Beardsley, who is no longer with us. You don't have to wait till you get to college to use it. She used her money to go to Broadway this year because she's interested in becoming an actress. And so that was pretty exciting. So we're hoping all third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade families out there will pitch in and help their kids write their essays. And it's really a lot of fun. We're also going down to kindergarten. This is the time that we talk a lot about kindness. And we're collecting pennies. And we have, for the loaves and fishes, food pantry in Ellsworth. We'll be collecting those through the whole month of February. And we do have a collection box in the office if anybody wants to bring in, you know, their old pennies that they're not using. We just are almost ready with iReady diagnostic. The first graders are the first time they took it for a baseline. And second through eighth graders have done an excellent job. We're ready for some fun. Speaking of fun, our first grade concert is right after vacation, Thursday, February twenty-seventh. We do our concert, and then we have an art show. So please prepare to come to that. And right after vacation, we always collect the vacation reading challenges. This will be our, we did it in November, we did it in December, and now it's February. And we're really hoping to break that fifty percent mark. All you need to do is read six things over the course of the vacation. You can be read to or read to somebody. Have your parents mark it down and bring that sheet in. And we will put it in a drawing, and you too, children, could be on the EEMS book video. It's a lot of fun. PTF news, we have science rocks coming right after vacation. They are going to do a full K through eight assembly, and it's all about how science and sound work together. That's going to be exciting. And right after vacation, we have kindergarten registration. Believe it or not, we are welcoming in our two thousand seven, sixteen, seventeen newest class. And we need you to call the school and talk to Sherri Cox to make an appointment on either Tuesday or Thursday. We also, right after vacation, we will, in March, we're going to start our Read Across America with a magic show from Greg and Axel. They are a, it's called Book Magic. We're going to do that on Monday, on Tuesday. And on Wednesday, we will celebrate Dr. Seuss, if he had been alive, one hundred and twelfth birthday. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Amy Bowles.
Good evening, everyone. First, I wanted to report out on our annual FASA night. We had our largest turnout ever in having forty-four people attend. We had families from all over the county come, which was awesome. We had families from Newark Wegas High School, MDI, Sumner, and Ellsworth High School that we were able to service. And the people from Fame came and individually helped families fill out their FASA forms. We were very excited. As I reported out last month, Mr. Clifford and I had visited the Blue Hill School as part of our kind of campaign around Hancock County to talk about bridge year. And as a follow-up to that, the eighth grade teachers from Blue Hill contacted me and asked if they could bring their entire eighth grade class to HCTC. So they came to us at the end of January, and that's the first time that school has ever participated in anything like that with us. They brought thirty-two eighth graders, and they took a tour of the entire school, spent about ten minutes in each program, and then were able to eat in our cafeteria for lunch during restaurant. They came a little bit early, and they pre-ordered what they wanted, and then they ate in our restaurant. So that was a good connection for us to make with the Blue Hill community, and it went really well. I also reported out to you last month about bridge year, and I just wanted to give you an update that Executive Director Fred Woodman and Assistant Director Rui Galley came to Ellsworth High School and met with all Ellsworth High School sophomores during the day, and then at night, met with sophomore parents with Mr. Clifford and I about the bridge year opportunity. And we followed that up. And I went with them also to Bucksport High School to talk about bridge year and to Sumner Memorial High School. And we had really successful nights, a lot of interested families. And what was nice about it is we finally had the finalized information on the Competitive Skills Scholarship Program that we were able to share with families. And I've kind of put a little bit of the information. This is an amazing opportunities for families through the Department of Labor. This is actually a scholarship that's been in place for a while for adults. But Senator Brian Langley, a very good supporter of CTE, worked on this with the Department of Labor and was able to make an addendum to that law and have this scholarship program also be available to students that are exclusively in bridge year as well. So as long as students and families meet the income guidelines, that's the first tier of eligibility for the scholarship. The next tier of eligibility has to do with, does your CTE center have approved programs that follow Department of Labor and CTE laws in Maine? All of ours do. So our students qualify for that. And then the third tier is, will they be going on after high school and entering an approved occupation through the Department of Labor that they feel is a competitive job market? And as long as a child is doing that, they can apply for this scholarship. We have a group of seniors right now, the three passed that first tier, second tier and third tier, and they're now in the finals. So we're now waiting to hear if those three students will be awarded scholarship. That scholarship will reimburse their families for all of their bridge year classes their senior year. It will reimburse them for their textbooks, and it will reimburse them for any supplies they had to buy for their CTE program. And then it will follow them to college. And it will award them tuition reimbursements for college textbooks. And if they live off campus and they're over ten miles away, it will reimburse them mileage to and from class. So it is an amazing opportunity for families and kids to access college who may not otherwise have been able to financially. So we are accepting applications right now for bridge year for sophomore families. The application deadline for next year's bridge year class is Friday, February twenty-sixth. That is when the applications are due to high school guidance counselors. Recruitment will be kicking up into high gear a little bit later than normal. Will be starting after February vacation to give us some time to meet as an advisory committee to make final decisions, or at least preliminary decisions around programming for next year. I'll start by going to Deer Isle after vacation. And then in the next several weeks in March will be when I go to all the high schools to talk to sophomores and juniors about programming in HCTC. So I will let you know when the application deadline for HCTC programs will fall is. Finally, Skills USA, I'll just quickly say it's Friday, March fourth. I'll give you more details later during the meeting when I ask for approval to go overnight to Skills USA. But this is the first year they're piloting a middle school competition, which I'm really excited about. It is the first time in Maine that we do this. It's a CO2 dragster race car competition this year. And if it is successful, I think they're going to try to offer more middle school competitions as a part of Skills USA. A lot of other states do this to kind of build momentum and get kids exposed to CTE earlier. So we're trying it for this one thing. So this year, they allowed any students in the state of Maine the opportunity to compete. And we have six students that will represent HCTC from Hancock County that will go with our fifty-three high school students that are going to compete at Skills USA. So we'll have fifty-nine kids representing HCTC at Skills USA this year. Any questions?
How many did you have last year?
I think it was fifty.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks.
I don't have a, a long report tonight. I'm going to say something off the, off my report that you have, and that is that the, this year, and I don't have the numbers, and I'm sorry, I'll present them next month. But I think we've only canceled two or three classes in our enrichment program, which is a record number. Obviously, it's not too hard to make a record when you've only had three semesters. But even in my career as an adult ed director, so we've had a wonderful response to our enrichment programming. So, and that's a tribute to all of the instructors and, and to Marilyn for putting together a great, working with me to put together a great catalog. So I'm really excited about that. Our patient care work-ready program, which is part of our grant, that's the collaboration with RSU twenty-five, is starting in a couple, in a few weeks. It's a great opportunity to get the soft skills, the functional skills for being prepared for the workforce with a real focus on healthcare. I've given, I've done that training myself several times, and I found it not as effective as a general course, but it's a wonderful, this will be a wonderful opportunity. It's a pilot so that everybody in the class would be interested in the field of healthcare. So when we bring people in, they'll be from a healthcare facility. Everything will be related to that. So it would certainly give people a leg up in terms of preparing for that. And that is scheduled at the same time as our CNA class. So it's three weeks of the work-ready, and then students who are interested could go into the CNA program. But that work-ready program is designed for anybody interested in healthcare. So if anybody needed a jump start, that would be a great course for people to take. I think I've reported at most of the sessions that we have this new learning block where we have, we start our classes every five weeks. So the next block of our academic classes will start after vacation. So it would be a great, it would be great to hear from people this week or have them come in to see me before vacation. I might be able to schedule something over vacation so that they wouldn't miss any classes starting that week. Seems to be a great way to, our numbers have increased in terms of persistence, and, and the students report that one of the reasons is that they, I ask them only to commit to the next five weeks. And then the idea is that they'll feel comfortable and, and comfortable with only staying five weeks. And for the most part, students have stayed and stayed and stayed, which is wonderful. And then lastly, we have our customer service workshop that we do in collaboration with the Ellsworth Chamber that is coming up in the month of March. So employers who are interested in giving any of their employees a little pep talk about customer service from area business people, that's coming up on Tuesday mornings in, from eight-thirty to ten at, on Tuesdays in March. And the locations, we're hoping to move them to the different employers. So that's a great opportunity. It's twenty-five dollars with scholarships provided. So it's a really great opportunity for employers to have training right here in Ellsworth. An example of a way that I feel like Ellsworth adult education can contribute to economic development because I think we all are well aware of how important customer service is for business development. So, does anybody have any questions?
Are the four sessions, would someone sign up for all four?
That's right. They're a series. So if you come to all four, then you get a certificate. But you could come to each one individually.
Is the cost, does it?
The cost is for, twenty-five dollars for all the sessions.
Also, that's pretty.
It's basically not, not much at all.
Yeah.
The idea of it is that if you don't have a fee, then people are less likely to come. That's why, why it's twenty-five dollars with a scholarship. Because we find if you offer something at no cost, people often.
They sign up and then.
They forget that they signed up. Exactly. So we wanted it to make a, make it affordable for people, but also charge a little something.
Yeah, makes sense.
Any questions? Do you want me to send you, Paul, do you want me to send you a?
Sure.
Flyer? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Rachel.
Good evening. How's everybody? Nice to see you. I, this past month has been a month of standards development work. We've had one large task that I've been focused on and has been coming along very well. Shannon Murdock and I have facilitated teacher work sessions in each content area between schools and between grade levels to choose the standards that we'll assess in each course and each grade level in each school. We are doing the work of looking at the standards we're teaching, not the resources, but the standards, and determining that they are aligned with the grade above and below and with the, with each school. So teachers from twelfth grade, ninth through twelfth, have been meeting with the eighth grade teachers to talk about the alignment between science, for example. And then the science teachers in eighth, seventh, and sixth came together and talked about the standards they were teaching to make sure they're aligned and they're building upon each other and giving students the foundational skills they need to progress. And then all the way down to kindergarten. And we've done that for each content area. We will, due to our previous snow day, we missed our, our work with the VPA department, but we'll be doing that right after break. Worked with separate science departments as we were looking at curriculum resources they'd been using and, and in the, in the context of the alignment. Have been having wonderful conversations with teachers and realizing, and what we know already, but just having good conversations about how much the teachers care about what they're teaching and how well they know their students. So that it's been a really wonderful experience for both Shannon and me. I'll, I'll speak on her behalf because we've been really seeing how thoughtful the teachers have been about working with each other and, and being able to have those conversations in the hall when they have small moments, but just having the time, sitting for really three hours and talking about, you know, the standards that really will help our students become strong, competent, you know, citizens with high self-esteem, feeling that they are able to take on the world and, and get home mortgages and get bank accounts and, you know, move on, think about college. All those things, we looked at standards through four, through four criteria. The endurance they have to help students move forward in their lives, the leverage they have to be connected in between different disciplines, whether it helps them become ready for the next level of learning, and whether there are things that they would see in state exams that make them feel confident to take those things on. So we looked at every standard in the Common Core, math, ELA, in the main learning results and social studies, and in the next-gen science standards in science through those four lenses and had discussions about the very most important ones that we want to focus on for assessment. Obviously, all the teachers are teaching all of them, but we want to make sure that they're focused on which ones developmentally are the ones that they really want to zero in on to help students move to the next level and feel competent. So that they're really getting strong computation skills, strong literacy and fluency skills all the way through and feeling like they're ready for the next step at each step of the way. So it's been a very gratifying and meaningful task. And I think that once we're able to do that, we can move on to talk about assessment. Next year, we will, the Curriculum Instruction Assessment Team and most teachers have really identified the need to have some professional development on assessment and building meaningful assessments around those standards that we've identified. So I think that it's been a relief for a lot of teachers because all of them have been trying to teach and assess everything because they're so conscientious and feeling like, what if the next teacher isn't able to look at this piece? I better do. I better do it. And so having the conversations where, you know, one grade will say, you know what, we'll focus on that, if you can just get them strong on this, set up where you left off. It's been really meaningful, and I think, and most of the teachers have walked out feeling like they had less on their plate to, to really hone in on before they let the kids go to the next level. So I think that it'll be more streamlined and effective and give teachers more time to focus on what they know they're going to take care of in that year. So it's been a very meaningful process, and I'm looking forward to all the, the good work that'll continue out of that. The CIA team, after doing the four content areas through the, those three weeks, took those alignments and broke into different groups and looked at the alignment, K through twelve, and kind of followed through the different strands, like fluency and comprehension and speaking and listening in ELA, and numeration and different pieces of math and science and social studies, and, and searched for the different alignment holes, and they found almost none, so this, this work has been really effective and, and good. Now we are finishing up, like I said, visual and performing arts and world languages, and then we will be able to put this out to all the teachers to have them share it and look at it and work with their coworkers and talk about it, and then we will share it with our leadership team and hopefully get it to you, March and April, to be able to approve an graduation standards policy for the district. So that's been exciting work. Also, through, some additional funding has become available through our carryover project and our Title I A grant, and we are hoping to have some instructional coaches come to the school to work with our teachers where they feel they could use some support, also help them look at differentiated instruction and proficiency-based instruction, and so that's in process, and as we confirm who will be able to have come in over the rest of the year, we'll, I'll share that with you. A couple of things that were not on my report, due to dicey driving issues this morning, didn't make it up to Bangor for a workshop that we are going to have about the MEA testing. And so knowing that a lot of people weren't going to be able to make it, they are sharing that information with us this week, and we'll be able to share that with our teachers so they can be prepared. I believe that our teachers are completely confident, ready to go with that process, based on the ability, our infrastructure, as far as technology is up and running and ready to go. They did a beautiful job last year with the S-Back, and, you know, as Jim said, I think the school is ready, the teachers know routine, and I think it'll be very similar, but we'll have specifics this week, and we'll be able to share anything about that next month. And finally, just a fun thing that I think will really help kids have some understanding of figurative language, the theater company, Barn Arts Collective, through some title funding, we've been able to have them come, actually postponed this morning, they're coming on Thursday morning and doing a performance of the Twelfth Night. They have four actors who are acting out ten roles in the Twelfth Night in kind of an updated, fun production of Shakespeare's production, and they are going to meet with the students after, some select students from each of the grades, to talk to them about how they were able to access figurative language and how they are able to understand that and bring it to life. So I think it's been an exciting opportunity for kids to see some really amazing theater. They've been doing some really good work in this area, they're New York actors, two of whom have decided to reside in this area and have been doing work throughout. They're doing two presentations next week at the Grand, doing stage combat and doing the Twelfth Night. If you or your family can catch it, it is a lot of fun and very impressive and a great way to get kids to like Shakespeare, because I, I took my own kids and they were very excited about that, so that'll be fun, it'll be on Thursday, and the middle school will be able to attend that first thing in the morning. Any questions?
I have a question, Rachel.
Yes.
There is so much amazing work going on, I'm just curious as to what is happening for professional development for like health, phys ed, the arts.
So we are working with the standards development, it's, it's been included in the health, phys ed and phys art, health, phys ed and phys arts, physical education. This last November, they were all a part of what we were doing, they had professional development with the new fitness brand that they're working on. Also, actually, just at the staff meeting at EEMS on Wednesday, Dave Norwood just did a presentation of some amazing work that he's doing, getting kids, doing interactive responses, so he's been actually bringing his work to the rest of the staff. And so during the, as well as the November days, the PE department came together and talked about ways of being able to access standards development, they are actually ahead of the curve, because they've been doing skills assessment and working one-on-one with kids all along, and so they really have good ways of doing that already, and people like Dave Norwood are coming up with even more interesting things. He has a way of using his iPad and having kids hold up cards to respond to ways that they move and asking questions about the movement they do, and he's able to scan the room, and, and it comes up in a way of taking polls of how they feel about what they're working on, so he's doing some really exciting work. The visual and performing arts group has been meeting, I think more so this year, they've said, K-12, and talking about aligning their standards and aligning their work, so when the kids leave eighth grade, they're ready and they're excited about the VPA Academy, they're looking forward to the programming that's been going on there. Also with, just recently with the SIG grant, we were able to support new programming in the arts department. They have an entire new jewelry-making program, and they are moving ahead with that, so there's been a lot of, a lot of movement. Is there particular things you're interested in?
I'm just curious about health, of course.
Well, they've been doing a lot of work, and actually, we just met, we actually did meet with physical education, I didn't mention that, we aligned all the standards with them as well just last week, and sat, and the nice thing too is that not only is the health teacher, Anthony Jones, meeting through physical education, but we also had him be a part of our life sciences alignment, because he is working on anatomy and physiology, and so he has become part of the new alignment of the life sciences, and so having him there as part of the academic piece, as well as physical education piece, was really nice in that he is now, has his health standards aligned into the life sciences standards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the audience, viewing public. My report this evening is going to focus primarily on the budget, and I'll get to that in just a couple of minutes, but I'd like to report to you, correspondence, you had two letters of retirement in your packet, one from Gail Dill, kindergarten teacher at EMS, and one from Ellen Beekman, librarian at EMS, both of whom will be retiring this year. Great service from these ladies over the years, and be sorry to see them go. I'd like to report on some new hires, and for the Ellsworth School Department, have taken place since we last met, Deb Richards, who was already employed in the adult ed department as our evening coordinator, is a part-time teacher, and Emily Nash has also been hired as a part-time teacher under the grant that Annie mentioned a little bit earlier. And we've hired Jenny Berry as an IT data specialist, replaced Reggie Lazott, who had moved on. And we'll put a call out once again for the members of the public to see that we still have a couple of vacancies, we are still looking for a point-five full-time equivalent GT teacher at the high school. We do think we have a way that we're going to be able to fill that for the balance of the year, but the position still remains a vacancy, and we're also looking for one day of a part-time CNA clinical supervisor at HCTC. The other piece that I'll mention that's not on my written report is, I had the opportunity to listen in a little bit to the education committee the other day discussing standards, and you heard Rachel talk at length about the standards work that our teachers are doing and moving towards proficiency-based. As you know, part of the proficiency-based diploma law requires that students are proficient in all eight content areas and the guiding principles. There was a lot of discussion on the legislature and the education committee making recommendations to change that, so stay tuned. There are a lot of recommendations that range from as drastic as making the diploma based upon the guiding principles with the academic content being supporting, to reducing the number of content areas that students need to be proficient in as a core group and having some as electives. But it's a very fluid conversation, and it's one that we're sure to stay in tune with, and I'll report back to you as we learn more about it. In terms of the budget, and I've, I've provided you all with a copy of the very first draft of the expenditure side of the budget, and we'll let you know that it's just over an eight percent increase in expenditures, and I, I mentioned this for the viewing public as well, obviously, an eight percent increase in expenditures is a very healthy increase. It's important to know that this budget draft includes all requests that were put forth by our departments and our building administrators. It also includes a projected ten percent increase in health insurance premiums, again, we don't know what that is going to be. It includes all new requests for new positions, it includes between forty and sixty thousand dollars for an after-school program to take over for the program under the ASPIR program, and I think as Rachel had mentioned in an earlier meeting, one of the things that we don't know about that, the grant, there's an RFP out for the grant, we won't know about who is awarded that grant until June, so we're putting a placeholder in the budget. There are also funds for our teachers to work with students after school and during school vacations as they move towards proficiency. There are significant dollars in there for professional development for teachers and also for summer work for teachers to continue their work towards a proficiency-based model. Now, our leadership team has met once on a previous iteration of the draft that you have in front of you, they're meeting again tomorrow where we're really going to start looking at what priorities are, because there are some things that are going to need to be prioritized in this budget. I do not see, even with the good news I'm going to give you in the next item, I don't foresee an eight percent increase in the budget as something that we can go forward with prudently. With that being said, we do have some positive news. One of the pieces is, we received our ED 279 subsidy reports before the first of February. It's been a lot of years before that has happened, so we actually have some numbers to work with. They were released to us on Friday, January twenty-ninth, and it's important for everybody to remember that the report is preliminary. Legislature is still in session, and there are still a number of bills that will have a fiscal tag attached to it that may impact final numbers. However, based upon that preliminary information, our printout is favorable as compared to last year. There are a number of factors that go into the funding formula, one of which is the combination of valuation of your city and your student enrollment. Typically, a good combination for a school department is to see a decrease in valuation and an increase in enrollment. If you look at R279, and the Department of Ed now uses a three-year rolling average for valuation, Ellsworth's valuation went down for that three-year period, one point two one percent, and what that means is, that expected mill rate where we have to raise money locally to get our subsidy, the amount of money that that mill rate is based against is based upon a smaller valuation figure, so that is positive news. The other piece is enrollment. We have seen a very small uptick in enrollment from April of two thousand fifteen to October of two thousand fifteen, and in the operating cost component of the funding formula, that increase of a small number of students increases your operating allocation, so that leads to a greater level of subsidy. So there's one good piece. The other piece that happens in that funding formula is that there are other subsidizable costs that are calculated outside of the formula. Those other costs are career and technical education, gifted and talented, transportation, special education, and those are factored into this formula based upon historical expenditures. We had a higher level of expenditures in special education last year and in career and technical education. When you factor inflation for those, those increase our allocation for other subsidizable costs, so that's a positive thing for us as well, we're reimbursed for those costs. So with all that being said, when you factor those pieces together, Ellsworth is slated to receive an additional four hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-four cents in subsidy, and that's a real positive thing. I did mention the expected mill rate earlier, the expected mill rate that came in with the last budget the state passed last year was eight point two three, the state has increased that to eight point four four. Even with our decreased valuation, that means that we're going to have to raise an additional hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, excuse me, to obtain that four hundred eighty-one thousand dollars of subsidy, but still, it's a net gain of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars when you look at it, so that's a very positive thing. Now, again, I'll, I'll stress, these, these reports are preliminary and they're likely to be adjusted. One adjustment that's probably going to take place is, the state used a new system this year to collect data on staffing. It used to be a system known as MEDAM, it's the Main Educational Data Management System, some of you may have heard of it, I know many of you out here in the audience have heard of it. They changed to a system called NEO, it's where they're moving a lot of their data collection. They had to do a number of trainings with local school districts this year to help people understand the differences in the system. Our data was entered accurately, we went over it. However, one of the things that happened with our data in terms of staffing in many other districts, the number of staff members that were reported, okay, came in lower than what we actually have, and it's not just a situation that happened in Ellsworth, it happened in probably two or three dozen other districts. Now, the good news for us is, when they make the correction, if they do, it's going to result in our per pupil rate increasing, which should raise our subsidy just a little bit, so that will be an adjustment, and as I mentioned earlier, there are a number of bills that are being discussed at legislative level right now that could result in the change. But for the time being, as we work on our budget, we have numbers to work with, we have a direction to move forward with, so we'll be bringing the finance committee in after we have our leadership meeting tomorrow, to start looking at the individual departments and see where we're going. But it is positive news. Any questions?
Thank you. Move on to committee reports, we have no old business to cover. New business, we have a staff presentation?
Yes. Ms. Robler?
I would like to introduce you to Ellen Savage. Ellen is representing Child and Family Opportunities tonight. We're just going to do a brief presentation on our pre-K collaborative that we've had in place, this is our sixth year. One of the things that we did when we began the collaborative is, we thought about the goals that we wanted to happen in our pre-K program. We wanted to serve more four-year-old children who may not have had the opportunity for quality early childhood education. We wanted to have something that would broaden the use and use the main early learning guidelines as well as the National Head Start. We didn't know National Head Start when we started, but we wanted something that would have good guidelines when we were forming this collaborative. We wanted to increase the number of slots for children with disabilities in inclusive settings, and we wanted to ensure, because public four-year-old programs were starting, that we would be on that trajectory and we would, children would receive the benefits. So this collaboration started way back in two thousand eight, Wayne Ennman was at the helm, and we had a lot of public meetings, and we had made the decision that we would collaborate with Child and Family Opportunities for a variety of reasons, mostly because they do have all of those goals in place, as well as they, they have a comprehensive program for all children. And so we thought you have in your packet, the Ellsworth Pre-K Head Start Collaborative Report, every year they give us a report, and so we thought that you might want to hear just some highlights of that and then have any questions for Ellen. Ellen, you're on.
Thanks. Good evening. So I, as Amy said, am from Child and Family Opportunities, and we run a number of pre-K Head Start collaborations across Hancock and Washington County, so we're very fortunate to be working with the Ellsworth School Department to, to serve kids in this town. The report that you have in front of you is last year's comprehensive report, of course, we do this every year, so at the end of this program year, we'll be, be providing data about this year. I do want to say, one of the, the differences this year is, we've limited class size to sixteen preschoolers, and you're, up until this year, we would serve eighteen in a classroom, and based on, on some pre-K regulations that are coming our way in two thousand seventeen, we just decided we were going to start that now. So we currently are serving sixteen preschoolers and their families here in Ellsworth in one morning session. We run four mornings a week, a half-day program for those kids and families. We do, as Amy mentioned, part of our program is providing comprehensive services, which means children get that academic and educational foundational learning, but we're also providing a, a number of health screenings, developmental screenings, nutrition screenings, and serving families around their own needs and goals and, and whatever it takes them to support their children to be great learners. So that's what most of our, our time without kids is spent, is doing all of that kind of work. We do, we do follow main's early learning guidelines along with the National Head Start Performance Standards, which means that there's a number of mandates, just like you guys deal with every day, I know you do, we have the same thing in our early childhood programs. So we are currently using the Dial Four Developmental Screening, takes a peek at children's language and literacy, motor skills and concept development, and that's a snapshot early in the year, much like your kindergarten screening would look like. And from there, we do ongoing assessment all the time, just like, just like what happens in the K-12 education role. So we, teachers are constantly observing children in all of the developmental domains and looking to see, see growth in all of those school readiness skills, so by the end of the year, we expect a huge percentage of, of our four-year-olds to be ready to move on to kindergarten. to be ready to move on to kindergarten. We do work closely with CDS, Child Development Services, to provide services for children with special needs. Most often, we're screening and children are receiving a lot of services for speech. On occasion, they're also receiving physical therapy, occupational therapy, and other services that can support them and their families. We have, over the past few years, instituted the High School Curriculum, which is an evidence-based early childhood curriculum. And it's looking at all of the different domains. Our professional development has been really geared around, how are we doing that? So we all know that you can read a book and then what really happens in the classroom can look different. So trying to really support our teachers to learn that curriculum, learn how to institute that curriculum while still individualizing for every child in the program. So I did mention the disabilities thing. One of the things that we do early on is to identify children who may have some disabilities, get them services, and then, as folks were talking earlier, how do you get them ready for that next level? And a lot of that will be happening this spring as we're transitioning children into kindergarten, working to have some smooth transitions for kids. We have, over the last two years, experienced a decline in the number of children who are actually qualifying for services. So we may be referring kids for children for services, knowing that they're not where they should be developmentally, and yet they're not meeting the threshold to receive services. So we are looking at ways to support those kids in the classroom, those children in the classroom, when there's no other additional outside services available. And in all of that, we of course are working with parents to have an understanding of their children's development, how to support that, how to be an advocate for their child, how to really, you know, we're so lucky to have children, but we only have them for a short period of time and they have their parents forever. So a big role is to help parents get ready and support them to be able to move their children through public school. Any specific questions? I know you have the report, which is based on last year's information, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
That was very informative. Thank you very much.
And I would just close by inviting any of you, if you ever want to come see it in action. There's nothing like a bunch of four-year-olds on a snowy day. Come on over. Love to show you the center and their classroom.
And our collaborative is for another year, so we do a three-year collaborative. So next year, we'll have another year of our collaborative and then we'll do our memorandum of understanding again.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Originally, the agenda had included a second presentation tonight. Bill Dove was going to come in and represent the Everybody Eats program and talk about the Backpack Program. He was unable to make it tonight and is asked to come back in May. So we're going to try to put him on that agenda.
All right. So we're going to have... Do you guys want to go over the policies that are... I mean, I can read them off if you'd like. Would you like to go over the policies that we have, we can work it on?
Yeah. If you'd like to read any, Ken.
Okay. We have the first read of policy JL, Student Wellness Nutrition and Food Sales on School Property.
I want to preface this one by talking a little bit. This was a policy that was developed quite some time ago. And what happened was, right before it was going to come forward to the board for a first read, Mr. Daley, who by the way is unable to be here tonight, you won't know I'm not feeling well today. Think that's going around. Found out that from the federal level, there's going to be some guidance that was forthcoming. We've been waiting for that guidance and it has yet to arrive. So the Policy Committee decided that a lot of good work has been done. Why don't we take one more look at it? When the guidance comes, we can go back and readjust, but we want to take it forward and value and validate the work that's been done. So that's why it's here before you tonight.
And when Mr. Hayden said it was done quite a while ago, it was probably last spring that we worked on it with the leadership team, administrators from each school. And we had some people from LBI Acadia helping us on it. And one of the... And so, you know, basically, it's covering some of the federal requirements that were present, have been present all along. And, you know, like Mr. Hayden said, we're anticipating that they're going to come up with some new guidelines too. So that will happen when it happens and we can adjust this policy if necessary at that time. We wanted to get it into place. A lot of it has to do with what can be sold in food sales on school property. It's getting things so that they... We have healthy things available for kids at all times. Yeah, so this is first read.
I just need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the first read of policy JL, Student Wellness Nutrition and Food Sales on School Property, as recommended by the Policy Committee.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing them move to a vote, all in favor? Thank you. Next item is second read of policy CHD, Administration in Absence of Policy. We're fine to go ahead and move to the motion if you, if anything, just to preface the motion, Beth?
I move that we approve the second read and adopt policy CHD, Administration in Absence of Policy, as recommended by the Policy Committee.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. The next item is second read of policy JLCD, Administration of Medication to Students.
I move that we approve the second read and adopt policy JLCD, Administration of Medication to Students, as recommended by the Policy Committee.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Second read of policy JLF, Reporting Child Abuse and Neglect.
I'll make a motion to approve the second read and adopt policy JLF, Reporting Child Abuse and Neglect.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Second read of policy JLCD, Medical Marijuana in Schools.
I move to approve the second read and adopt policy JLCD, Medical Marijuana in Schools, as recommended by the Policy Committee.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Consideration of Approval of Overnight Trip. Thank you.
So this is our annual request to attend the State USA Skills USA competition. This year, students would leave Thursday, March 3rd. And we typically get them home Friday at 8:00. To clarify, middle school students do not participate in Thursday's activities. So we do not have middle schoolers with high schoolers overnight, on Thursday night. We have five staff spending the night with the 53 students in the hotel. I always go and spend the night at the hotel in case of any problems. And then the two Skills USA advisors and two other teachers attend overnight. For the most part, my entire staff stays until the dance ends, which is usually between 10 and 11 o'clock. Most of my staff lives in Bangor, so they just go home after that part. So we have plenty of supervision through curfew. And then there are five of us that spend the night. We stay at the Ramada Inn in Bangor. The kids get to participate in all of opening ceremonies Thursday night. There's a dance with competitors. And then Friday, some of them get up between 5:00 and 5:30. They have to be at the competition site, ready to go at 6:15. So we typically try to get them there between 5:45 and 6:00 to get them started. So you have that scheduled for Friday. The one change, because you'll notice at the top of the agenda, it says as of February 3rd. The one change that has happened since then, they just haven't sent us a revised version, is the middle school awards ceremony, they've decided to quit with the high school awards ceremony. So that's why you see that 3:00 arrow moving down to 5:00. They're now going to do the middle school ceremony as the opening part of the high school ceremony, so that the middle school kids will actually see the high school awards ceremony and get to be kind of a part of that with us. So I think that's a good change. I've also given you the floor plan for Skills USA for this year. That is the floor plan for UTC. A lot of the competitions are also at Eastern Maine Community College. We have not gotten that map yet. There is a shuttle this year, if you're attending. I suspect a few have attended in the past. There will be a shuttle this year going back and forth between EMCC and UTC for people that want to watch, because parking is horrendous at the two places. And this year, they're using the new Public Safety Building with EMCC also for some competitions. So there's actually going to be three different sites we're going to have kids at this year for the competitions. So as it gets a little bit closer, I will email you, as I have in the past, the schedule for where competitions are, which ones are open that you can actually watch and observe the kids competing, and which ones are closed. It's kind of frustrating to go to a competition and realize you can't get in and watch. And I've also provided you with the competitor list. There actually was one more change as of this afternoon, but none that affect anything that you would need to know about tonight. Just one student changed what competition she was going to do at the last hour. But this is a comprehensive list of all of the students, the name of their competition, and what high school they're from. And as you'll see, we have, again, every high school is represented. GSA right through Naragüe, Estero, MDI, Sumner, Ellsworth, and Buxford. So we're happy that we have kids from all over Hancock County representing us. So we just ask your approval for the overnight trip for policy.
I move that we approve the overnight trip for Skills USA students.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks.
Item 8, Administrator Contracts.
Mr. Shiller, receiving your packet, a list of recommendations for amendments to administrative contracts for the 16, 17 year, based on performance. 3% increase and extension of a contract, expiration by one year is warranted. There are two other pieces on there that I would mention that are also recommendations. One is Carolyn Heller, our business manager. In looking at average salaries across the state and across the region, hers was quite a bit lower. What this would do, it would increase her to $67,500. It would make that commensurate with a position responsibilities and be equivalent to regional and state averages. The other piece to note in there is because of our relationship with Hancock and Lemoine, she would also receive, as long as that partnership continues, a stipend that goes along with that. So that would be the recommendation for her. With Mr. McCluskey at EEMS, met with Mrs. Heller and with Mr. Peterson-Roper, Mr. Newitt, and talked about what is the future of that position. And as you know, that position was put into place as a school year position several years ago, three or four years ago. And it really is not enough time for the position to do it justice. In our conversation, which was very, very thoughtful, we talked about a range from anywhere from a school year position to a full year, 260-day position. And in that conversation, we determined that what was warranted was, instead of a 183-day per year contract, was 205 days a year, spending 80% of the time on assistant principal, 20% of the time on athletic administrator, which is an addition of 22 days. What that would allow is, Mr. McCluskey or anyone in that position, to do some work over the summer, which, in fairness to Mr. McCluskey, he did. He would come down to leadership team meetings, he would participate in work over the summer. But also, there are school vacations in which he has responsibilities for athletic events. So this would allow those days to be part of his work. So what that would do is increase his salary to $60,135. It would increase, that includes a 3% increase from his current per diem rate, and it does represent an addition of 22 work days. So that's my recommendation to you, and I would entertain any questions, Gavin.
I move that we approve the amendments to the contracts of the administrators listed, in accord with the terms and conditions of employment as recommended by the September 10th.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item K, Calendar and Announcements. The meeting's scheduled, a Policy Committee meeting will, you have a date to be determined?
We didn't select one yet. We're probably looking at the first Tuesday of March, I believe.
Are we doing Tuesdays?
Tuesday or Monday.
Mondays.
First Monday of March. What's likely to be on the agenda that day would be the final piece of the dress code. You heard Wyatt mention that the student council at Ellsworth High School provided some feedback on the most recent draft, as did the student council at EEMS. So it'll be an opportunity to discuss that and finally bring it forward. And given the work that's taking place in the legislature, there may be some other policies that we are able to take up at that point in time.
A Finance Committee meeting also to be determined for a date?
Yes. As I mentioned in my report earlier, tomorrow, leadership will really go over the figures that we presented to you tonight very thoroughly. And then we will start the Finance Committee meeting with each of the individual departments and move forward with that process. Those are typically morning meetings. I presume that'd be okay for you two ladies?
All right. We have a school board workshop scheduled for Tuesday, February 23rd, at the Ellsworth School Department Conference Room. Hopefully, not 8:00 AM.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, all right.
That 8:00 AM should be for the Policy Committee.
All right. All right. And a school board meeting on Tuesday, March 8th, right here in the City Hall Council Chambers at 6:30 PM.
I move a adjourned board meeting.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you guys for coming.
It's 7:30, everybody.